Polk County Fair Board would like to thank the Central High School FFA for building metal doors for our beef par. We did not have the resources to build them ourselves and they did a great job on them. They worked closely with the fair staff to make sure that all measurements were correct and not only built them for us, but also delivered them. The fair could not survive without the generous community partners like Central FFA. So, thank you. It was a letter from...
Thank you. Hi, I'm Zach Meyer. So, originally I was planning on having next year's, who was going to replace me, Andrew Love, to be here, but he was not able to make it, so I just wanted to let you guys know, next year, the plan will be Andrew Love will be speaking at these. The reason that I did it this year is because our student body vice president, Alana Schmidt, was not able to work that in her schedule because she worked a lot. So, I just took that over, but traditionally it's the vice president, so yeah, it'll be Andrew Love next year. Alright, so we got a lot going on. So, in the recent days, we've had, the freshman class council was interviewed. They were the last of the leadership positions for next year to be chosen because we go down there and like talk to them. So, we actually had 11 students were interested in the five positions. So, we actually let six have it because there were six amazing kids. I don't have the exact names of all the kids, but I know that the president is Natalie Wells. So, that's exciting to see. And then another thing with the freshmen is we had, the freshman orientation was last Monday. And that was amazing to see all those kids went into the cafeteria at this high school. And we had the teachers and the staff introduce themselves and our new principal for next year spoke, Janjo. And then we had different clubs and sports teams and lots of different like activities to choose from. Were there to represent like what Central High School is all about. And so, they were introduced to that and kind of given like an insight of like what they could do and be involved in. Because one thing that we always tell them is get involved. So, that's the big thing. We gave them an idea of what they could do. Other things that have been going on, there were athletic awards and best being awards on this last Saturday. And we had the final choir concert and the final band concert. We finished up, we had rotary awards for the freshmen, sophomores, juniors to be recognized for their talent in the classroom. Because the seniors have their senior awards, but it's good to recognize the other classes as well. Other things we had, we had our final club day. So, the kids were, I know for my club, we had a goodbye and a celebration for how, what we've accomplished throughout the year. So, I'm sure that a lot of kids had fun and got an idea of what they wanted to do next year. If they wanted to do a different club or wanted to continue. Graduation is this Friday, so that's exciting. I will not be able to give a report on what happened in June because we won't be having a school meeting in July. So, that'll be the next coming thing. And that's about it. Oh, yeah. And so, next year, we will not have Mr. Witt as our, the adjunct teacher. He will be replaced by Mr. Roberts. So, that's going to be a good transition. I think will help our school be better because Mr. Witt just has so much on his plate. So, it's good to spread sort of around the activities. So, yeah. Alright, thank you.
So, there's a couple of things. Graduation is rain or shine. Can you add that when you say it? And senior awards is?
Oh, yeah. On Wednesday. And then baccalaureate on Thursday, both at 7:00 PM.
Hey Zach, thank you for being here each month and giving the updates. It's been, it's been fun.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
Always brighten my mood and all of our moods. Congratulations on a wonderful, wonderful career in Central School District. I'm really looking to see what you do in the future.
Yeah, me too.
Where are you going to school?
I'm going to Colorado School of Mines in Golden, Colorado. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So, like Zachary, I will be graduating this year, so I do have these three wonderful young ladies that will be sharing the plate next year, representing. So, if they want to go ahead and introduce them first.
I'm Naomi LaRosa Junior.
I'm Landa Garcia, I'm a junior.
I'm Rosa Linda Sensin, I'm a junior.
So, basically what we did in the month of May, we had a trauma-informed training with, we had a trauma-informed training with Ms. Vanderlin. Our class took the ACE survey and we did a film study of people tigers. And our class is really looking forward to learning more about how to be trauma-informed and how it can help our school.
We also had a respect video lesson, which they were doing originally right by Bert and Jeffrey Barlow focused on being respectful of our local stores, off-campus lunch, Central High School staff and substitutes and ourselves. The logo was Respect All Bubbles. And then we recognized the work ethic of students. And then we also had an awesome field trip to the ropes course, which it involved like team-building and trust activities.
We had such a great time. We overcame fears, helped each other through challenges and obstacles. And Ms. Vanderlin had joined us too.
And what kind of memories do you guys have from that?
Well, I am deeply afraid of heights, so the ropes course was like really terrifying for me. But my peers helped me through it. They supported me. They encouraged me to keep on going.
Sorry, I wasn't able to attend that.
Just like Rosa said, that I got to, I'm really scared of heights. And so, our teammates go and like help us and then back to like be, be closer as friends and as a leadership group.
Yeah, and also I think it was a good way to end the year, like with all of our seniors graduating and everything, just to come together and actually build that relationship so we can continue on through the years. Something else that we have actually started, our pantry project, as I mentioned last time, that will be starting up next year. We have the shelves for it already and we're hoping to get donations from the community for that.
Thank you for allowing time to hear about some of our closing of the year activities. I just want to check in on how much time I have, if it's three minutes. Okay, because I read it really quickly and I think maybe seven. So, I had asked teachers to share things that are positive happening in their classroom that they'd want to share with the board as we're closing out the year. So, I'm going to start by sharing some of the year-end celebrations and please let me know if you can't hear me.
Move it a little closer for the students. The whole base of it if you could.
So, tomorrow is our last day for Beyond the Bell and Power Hour, and we have a fun field day planned. There's a kindergarten celebration scheduled for this Wednesday. There's Central High School graduates coming to visit team time Thursday morning at 8:15. Our fifth grade celebration is Thursday at 2 o'clock. And we have two sessions scheduled for our fun run on Friday at 12:50 to 1:30, and then again at 1:45 to 2:20. And then I asked teachers to share, so I'm going to start with some first grade celebrations. First grade students have worked hard all year mastering number bonds, friends of 10, adding two-digit numbers together and solving word problems. They are showing great skills in writing complete sentences that start with a capital letter and end with a period. They have strengthened their reading skills through targeted intervention groups, as well as through science and social studies lessons utilizing Be Glad strategies. Students have learned to use resources they have helped create, posters, charts, and chants to recall information when answering questions verbally and in writing. Our students are excited for their first grade field day tomorrow. They will participate in various games and relays with students from other first grade and K-1 classes, followed by a picnic lunch together. As the year comes to a close, the third grade team at Independence Elementary School has been using our PLC time to plan some great, important and exciting activities to end the school year. They are taking advantage of their resources in the community to promote literacy over the summer. One of the activities we'll be doing is taking our classes to the Independence Library to learn about the summer reading program. We'll be getting library applications to send home and student, with students, so when they go to the library, they can check out books. Third grade's last Be Glad unit is all about people who live in the Willamette Valley, both past and present. They'll be taking their classes to Riverview Park to look at the plaques about the Kalapuia Native Americans and immigrants who came to this area as they explore the Willamette River Trail. This will help our students see the real-world connection as we connect our learning to our community. Our team is also planning some get-to-know-you activities with our three combined classrooms to help our students get to know each other better, since they'll be mixing up classroom placements for fourth grade next year. We want to take this opportunity to help students find things in common with one another and start developing some friendships for over the summer and next school year. Some of our combined activities will also be around the Great American Eclipse that is happening this summer on August 21st and will be very visible in our local area. We are excited about what we have planned and the connection to our learning. Spring has been an exciting time in fourth grade at IES. We racked up our Oregon Historical Events Unit, which included field trips to Fort Yamhill and Grand Ron and Philip Foster Farm near Estacada. Students learned about important events and individuals in Oregon's history, from the early explorers to the Oregon Trail, comparing the perspectives of Native Americans and pioneers. Students experienced the Oregon Trail through simulations in the classroom and on our Oregon Trail Walk through the town of Independence. Students assumed pioneer identities and made decisions in their wagon trains as they loaded wagons, moved along the trail, fort by fort, suffered fates along the way, and finally reached Oregon City. Ms. Reiner once again took on the annual challenge of teaching 75 fourth graders the Virginia Reel, which they performed together for the whole school. It was super fun. Students also worked together in the classroom to assemble wagons in preparation for the Oregon Trail Walk. We are grateful for the many volunteers who gave their time and energy to make these events possible. Sheriff Mark, Sheriff Mark Garten visited IES on May 31st to share a presentation about internet safety for our fourth and fifth graders. His message encouraged kids to make smart decisions and be safe when using the internet, including social media and online gaming. Kids learned about not-so-obvious risks related to common teen and tween activities, including sharing photos and gaming chats. He talked about how cyberbullying often begins so that kids can know how to prevent it and how to respond appropriately when it happens. He emphasized how important it is that students know what to do and who to tell if they realize that they've made an unsafe decision or encounter risky situations. Additionally, Sheriff Garten encouraged students to talk to their parents and families about internet safety and to develop healthy boundaries for online activities. On Friday, June 2nd, IES fourth graders attended a Math Buddies Fun Fair at Western Oregon University. They enjoyed a partnership this spring with Matthew Ciancetta from Woo and his Math 396 students. Woo students have been corresponding with our fourth graders, getting to know each other and sharing helpful feedback about math problem-solving strategies. Fourth graders got to meet their Woo buddy at the Fun Fair on Friday and had a blast playing math games created by the Woo students. Some of the comments fourth graders shared regarding things they enjoyed about Math Buddies and ways their buddy helped them with their problem-solving follow. "I learned new ways to explain my work," said Zach. "It was fun because we got to ask each other questions," said Lily. "My buddy was Brooke. She has attacked. She wishes she had a dog." "She likes ice cream with extra toppings, like me." "She likes to play with her family, like me," that was Abby. "I liked that we wrote letters to them and they sent letters back," said Reyes. "And Math Buddies has helped me remember to show how I did when I did," said Sean. "It has been so rewarding watching these students grow over the last several months, becoming more independent as learners, improving academic and life skills, and preparing for future successes." As the year comes to a close, we want to say how proud we are of their hard work. We also want to express our gratitude for the tremendous support and involvement of our fellow IES colleagues, the Central School District, and our amazing community. And then I'll conclude with our fifth grade team. As we come to the end of the year and administer our last rounds of DRAs, we have seen an increasing number of students advance one or more reading levels. As excited as we are as teachers, it doesn't compare to the level of excitement our students demonstrate as they progress. Our students participated in a Talmage visitation where the web leaders took small groups of students on a tour and answered questions. All of our students were energized and excited about their transition to Talmage. As teachers, we felt the morning was well-planned and organized. We were very impressed with the high level of pride the web leaders demonstrated throughout the morning. Last month, the fifth grade team was able to go on a field trip to Omsi. Many of our students have never been to Omsi and a few even stated that they didn't think they would ever get to go back. We would like to thank our parent club for making this field trip happen. Our students were very engaged, had perfect behavior, and we're very appreciative. As we finish up our first year teaching our units using Glad strategies, we have found many benefits that have come as a result of implementing Glad. Student engagement has increased, collaboration among team members that's much more positive and productive, and students have retained what they have learned and made connections across units. One teacher shared that she has been watching our fifth grade students excel at research and presenting on an extra assignment about the solar system. Students were asked to pick the planet they were interested in and create either a Google slide presentation and model or a poster and model with at least 10 chunks of information. They are helping each other in unlikely student combinations, creating incredible artwork and models, and learning how to navigate the front of the classroom as a presenter. One student who often struggles, especially in writing, is teaching others how to insert questions, video links, do transitions, and text wrapping. We have a very proud fifth grade team. Again, thank you for allowing us to share our successes at IES.
Thank you very much.
Moving along, then moving into administrative reports, Doug Duesch from Polk County. Doug?
Yeah. How y'all doing?
Good. Thanks for letting me come out again. I'm going to just pass around some info for you here, just so you have it. So, thank you again for allowing me to come out this evening. I'll try to go as quickly as possible here and respect your time. It's my second time coming out this school year. We came out earlier and did a report on the school's mental health program with Polk County. This time I'm coming out just to talk to you a little bit about our suicide prevention efforts and to join all of you and thanking Buzz for the partnership that we've had the last several years. Buzz has been, he's just been a fantastic partner to us, to county. And you'll see with suicide prevention, I'll talk about that. But I know that when we start to talk about things like suicide, that sometimes that makes people nervous. Sometimes it worries people about what we're going to say and what we're going to do. And Buzz has allowed us in the school to do some projects around that. And I know in that he incurs some risk, he incurs, you know, the possibility that people will be critical of him or complain to him. And so, Buzz, we just really appreciate you being willing to trust us and let us come in. I handed out a report for you and I'm not going to talk much about that. But I just want to let you know, here in our department at Polk County, we lead the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is a multi-agency, multi-discipline coalition. We have law enforcement, school folks, multiple social service agencies, DHS, child welfare, lots of folks that are on that team. We meet quarterly and a big part of what we're doing is providing evidence-based training around suicide prevention. We've actually paid to have four of your school district staff be trained as facilitators in one of those programs so that they can provide ongoing training anytime you want with your school staff. So, again, that's one of those partnerships. And I do know that you all have let us use this space to do multiple suicide prevention trainings at no cost, which we really, really appreciate. Again, I won't go into a lot of detail about all that work because I don't want to bore you with that. But I did want to highlight one project that we've been working on. In addition to the training that we've tried to provide, we've provided that training to students and the staff and community members. We've also been working on some video projects and some messaging around mental health awareness and positive messaging around the province of suicide. And in that, again, we partnered with Central School District and specifically with Mrs. Rosanna Larson and the Power Peers class. And I, I need to say to you what a fantastic partner she has been to us. And you're about to see the fruits of that partnership here in a minute. I'm going to show you a quick three and a half minute video that we made with students from that Power Peers class that we think, we feel like turned out really, really well. We'll let you be the judge of that here in just a minute. Mrs. Larson just has given, her classroom does, has given us time, has allowed her students to be creative and participate in a process that is going to have real-life consequences, I think. And so, just very grateful for her. I also want to give a shout-out to just a couple of other people here, some of your district staff. Norma, and I hope Norma, I say this right, if there's, I think it's Orozco. Did I say it right?
That's pretty good, I think. I want to thank Norma. She was, she's up there at the front desk at Central High School. And I probably asked Norma when I go in there, when we were filming these videos, probably no less than 10 questions per 30 minutes, I think. And she was always extremely patient and got us things that we needed, supplies, things that we forgot, and she would go track that down for us. We just really appreciate her. One last shout-out to Jeff Witt, who also helped recruit students for this video. So, the video I'm about to show you, three and a half minutes, I want you to know that we went into Power Peers class. The students of the Power Peers class helped us develop this idea. Their fingerprints are all over it. They starred in the film. There are no paid actors in there. Joy from the high school makes a cameo appearance in there. But we just want to share this with you and let you see some of the great work that your students are doing. The fantastic work that Rosanna Larson is doing in the Power Peers. And, and I hope to show Buzz that your trust in us was worth it. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to step behind you and try to get that going.
Sorry, there's a little pixelation there. It doesn't really matter. I, I did just want to let you know, our plan is to come back in the fall and we'll work with Mrs. Larson to release that video at the high school with a plan. We're going to create posters that will have video steals from that film that will direct students to different places to get help, the school-based health center, the counseling office, our school-based mental health staff that are there in the building. And we'll be working to try to help students identify when they're, when they're feeling like, it was shown in that film, that there are, there is help here in the district and there's help around the community that they can access. So, any questions?
I have two questions. One, where can we get more of these cards?
I can, I can bring you a huge stack of those if you want. Yeah.
Two are in Spanish as well.
They... I don't know if they are, but if they're not, I, we will get them in Spanish and before the end of the summer. One of them ready to go in the fall. That's a great question. Anything else? Awesome. Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm just going to log out and then I'll, thank you very much.
Doug, thanks very much. Lisa Whitehall from the Get Fit program.
So, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Thank you for giving me your time to talk about our Get Fit program. Again, I'm going to do a little recap of the end-of-the-year activities from mid-year when I came in to let you know what we were doing and how things are going. So, we're going to do a little slideshow and I'll be talking during it. At the end, I'm also going to be reading a statement from one of our members that couldn't be here tonight. But she sent me an email about her story and I wanted to share that with you. So... I'd like to thank Adriana for helping me make this PowerPoint because I just provided her the stuff and she took it away. So, the slides you're seeing are some of the activities that we did this year. Participation in the Get Fit program since last year has definitely increased. We're at about 62% of the central staff participating in one or more Get Fit activities. We have many people who don't engage in the Get Fit activities for a variety of reasons, but are actively engaged in their health. There's many reasons why they don't do that. They may belong to a gym. But 85.4% of those say that the Get Fit program still reminds them to be healthy and encourages them and inspires them to continue on that healthy path. So, on this slide, we had people talk about how the effects that they had. And they showed weight loss, lowered their blood pressure, healthier eating, learned ways to combat stress, as well as others. And these are our Wellness Wednesday activities that people dressed for. Wellness Wednesdays give us a common goal, which builds community around healthy living. It builds friendships and encourages active people to bring balance into their lives. And the central staff, they're great role models for their students and parents and their community around them. From this slide, you can see that people feel that this is a really positive thing in their lives and want to keep that around. So, this is one of the quotes from our survey that someone shared with us. And on May 20th, we had an awesome day at Beaver Baseball, where Central Get Fit was awarded the All-Star Employee Wellness Program from Samaritan Health. This is a huge honor and I would like to thank Dory Vickery for nominating us. And heartfelt thank to Buzz and the board for their continued support of this program. So, Lori Leon is one of our instructional assistants at Ash Creek. And I'd asked her a while ago if she would share her story and she agreed nervously. But then something came up and she wasn't able to be here. So, this is her story. The journey started in September. "The journey started in September 2015. My doctor told me I was borderline diabetic and high cholesterol. I didn't want to go down the road of pills and shots. This disease is scary. I decided to take my health back and do it by diet. I quit eating candy and chips," which she says is her trigger food. "I was losing weight like crazy. I dropped a substantial amount of weight in just a couple of months, but I started to plateau. I was not exercising or walking at all, and in November I decided to join Get Fit's Walker Tracker Group. This group encourages me to walk and keep walking. My walking partner Bonnie Lashley and I started out at two miles on Monday through Thursday. We are going now between two and a half and three miles in under an hour. When we weren't able to do the walk outside because of weather, we would walk the halls of Ash Creek Elementary School. Each day I was getting stronger, and my first example of how strong I was becoming was during spring break of this year. My family and I went to Seattle and we were walking up six blocks to the Space Needle. I did this hike without stopping, mind you, two years ago." I did the...it makes sense. Oh, okay. "Mind you, two years ago, I did the same walk and had to stop three times to get up those hills. I did this walk without stopping in under 20 minutes. Another instance was just this last Thursday and Friday. I accompanied my fifth grade student on a field trip to Bend. On our first hike, my student turns around and I was right behind him, going up and down those stairs at Niagara Falls, sometimes running, woo hoo! My student turned around and says to me, 'Ms. Lori, it is okay if you go back.' I walked about 25,000 to 30,000 steps per day on our two-day trip, and we were walking up and down those hills at the lava beds. I was right up there with the front of the pack. If I went on this field trip a year ago, I would never have been able to keep up. I owe a big part of my success to Get Fit because it has given me the opportunity to keep moving and the strength to keep this journey going forward. I hope you will keep this program in our schools. The program is fun to compete with other schools and keep me active and on my healthy lifestyle journey. I started out at 315 pounds and now I am 231 pounds. I no longer am considered a pre-diabetic and I am stronger than I've ever been before. Please consider that if I am doing this well and end up at the number five or six in the overall competition, then this program is helping a lot of other people also. Thank you for giving me the lifestyle to be, excuse me, to be in shape and healthier." Lori Leon. So thank you. You have any questions for me? So yes, I'm very proud of our group and the committee that we have tonight. Joanne Divin is here, the rest of them couldn't be here, but they've done a lot of work out in the schools, on the ground, encouraging people to be active, eat healthier, all those wonderful things, so.
Steve, if you could go ahead and, on behalf of the school district and the board, accept that so we can get in and in your conference.
I will accept it, but I'll tell you what, you deserve a ton of credit.
Oh, thank you.
And the team and everybody that participates, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, Karen Harlow, Beyond the Bell.
That's a tough act to follow, she said thanks. I also have a highlight sheet for you. Thank you for having me. I'm Karen Harlow, after-school program director for the district. So we are in year four of a five-year grant, just finishing up, and I'm going to keep it pretty brief, I'm not going to go through all the highlights, that's why you have them, but I do want to mention a few things for this year that I really believe are going to be key to sustainability for our programs, which is what we've really been working hard on this year to move forward. So one of the, with the PLP at the high school, the Personal Learning Plan for students now, instead of the senior project, they have a certain number of community service hours that they need to give, and so we got a reading buddies program going, thanks to Teresa Henderson, the site coordinator at the high school, and her work with Prindi and Joyce Wall, actually, in coordinating that. And Teresa vets the students that want to volunteer and literally puts them through a little interview before they volunteer in our elementary schools as reading buddies. So that became hugely successful, of course, the kids love it. So the more, and we've talked about this before, the more high school students we can get involved coming into our after-school programs at the elementary level, especially, I think that'll help with the tutor aspect of serving the students. The second thing is the addition of Power Hour at the elementary schools, and I know that Christie talked about that earlier. The Power Hour, so our goal, how it's written in the grant, is that we serve 60 students at each school, and that would be regular attendees, regular attendees, that's considered attending 30 days or more of the after-school programs. With the addition of Power Hour this year, it opened up 30 more spaces at each elementary and targeting ELL students for language development, reading and writing, and that's been great, pretty seamless process as far as going from 60 to 90 students at each elementary. And with the addition of more staff, obviously, that's been really helpful. And we had our, I think last time we were here, we of course had the students come. I also talked about the Bell Bazaar, that was our first fundraising event we've ever attempted, and between that and community donations, we raised over $6,000. Our goal was $10,000, so we fell short of our goal, but we were told we wouldn't bring in $6,000, so I guess I should feel pretty good. It was fun. Amber Zoo, who coordinated that event, did a fantastic job. We got good feedback, we didn't have as many in attendance as we would have liked, but that's why it was our first, I guess. We have, I just want, we serve about 300 students a day between our five schools, and one of the things I'm proud about is the staff that continues to return. We had 71% staff retention from, and 89% of all Yamamell staff is Woo students. So we just got done with parent surveys, just asking parents, how are we doing serving you? And one of the questions comes back often, and I would like to share this just so that you understand it while you're talking to community members, is we aligned our calendar this year for after-school programs with the Woo calendar more than we ever have in the last three years, and it's because of that 89%. Some people have asked, why don't you start the first week of school and, you know, late, and Woo doesn't start until the last week in September, so that's why we start at the same time. It also takes us a while to identify students, there's a process that helps us identify students who will be the best fit for Beyond the Bell, and that's a process that involves teachers, administrators, the school-based counselors, et cetera, because we typically get more applications at the elementary level than we have spaces for at IES and Ash Creek especially. So one of the ways we saved money this year, Teresa Henderson at our high school, she's a retired science teacher, she also went through the admin program at U of O, and she loves data, she loves evaluation, anything she can crunch and graph, and so she is a great right-hand person in addition to being the site coordinator at the high school. She developed two different science curriculums in collaboration with the other site coordinators, and then trained them on that to deliver to students, so that was great. We had 13 teachers this year participate in our after-school programs with our clubs and all the different clubs, you know, chess, 3D printing, coding. We have a board member, but wore a different hat, Steve, that did coding at both the middle school and elementary school, and I think he learned a lot through that process, so it was great. It was great to get more people involved and asking about after-school programs.
Questions for Karen?
Any questions, or?
No questions, but just a great big thank you, Karen.
Yeah, thank you. I enjoy it. It's a challenge, but it's a good challenge, so thank you for allowing us to continue.
So Danielle and your band of...
Traumatized speech.
Traumatized people.
Good evening, I'll let them come up here with me. I'm Danielle Vanderlinden, I'm the trauma-informed coordinator at the high school, and I am working under a grant, one of two in the state that Central High School has been lucky enough to receive. We're really excited about the work we are doing. So I'm going to give you just a brief context, and then I'm really going to let these guys tell you a few short stories about how trauma-informed approaches have been rolling out at the high school, and we're excited about it. So we are working under the definition that a trauma-informed school realizes the widespread impact of trauma and the role schools can play in promoting resiliency, and I'm really looking at that as being our year-one kind of foundational, laying that out and helping people realize what trauma is. And then recognizing the signs and impacts of trauma in students, families, and staff, responding by fully integrating knowledge about trauma into policies, procedures, and practices, and actively seeking to resist re-traumatization of students and staff. And what I'm so excited about is that we have moved into actively resisting and responding to students that we are seeing who may be experiencing trauma, and that's what we will talk about this evening. So that's the work we're doing at the high school. Without further ado, I'm going to just let these guys get the ball going. Ben?
Hi. So one of the things we've been learning about is the idea of a heartbeat, and not the conventional sense of a heartbeat, but the heartbeat as an idea of kind of doing formative assessment, but not of content, but of our students' emotional state when they come into the room. Figuring out how to do that in a way that is quick, so that we're not taking up a ton of our instructional time, but that allows us to be sensitive to where they're at so that we can maximize that instructional time. So one thing that I've taken doing is just going out into the hall, and part of this is the geography of my room, if you've been in the high school building and you've seen where my room is, there's a staircase, and so a lot of the students are passing by, and so I just stand out there, and as my students are coming in, and as all my former students are going by, because I teach the freshmen, I just give them all a high five and ask them how they're doing. And it's been noteworthy and kind of surprising to me how quickly I've been able to learn to tell where they're at, and how, you know, willing students are in their own way to let me know when there's something wrong. And it gives me an opportunity to pull a student aside and say, you know, how can I help you out today? Do you need a minute? You know, that kind of thing, and just kind of make that a focus, and it lets them know that they have permission to have their feelings when they walk in the room, and that I understand that they're bringing in a lot more important things than semicolons, and that I care about that more than I do about necessarily my own content. So that's one little trick that I've taken on, and these folks have more clever ones.
Want to hand this out? We're never too old for show and tell. These are some fidgets that I put together, and I saved this one for an illustration, but I just wanted to say that I was able to apply many of the recommendations that have the training that we get for trauma-informed, to change the environment in my office. And so over the spring break, I had, I took some suggestions, I got some help from our custodian and one of my sons, and we removed some clutter which can be distracting and create even more issues for kids when they're focused on clutter in a room, and put a plant in there, and actually took some artwork done by previous students. So we have Vincent Van Gogh's "Starting Night" on one wall, it's really nice, and I consider it to be one of the more relaxing pieces that the kids have done. And then I've added some of these fidgets, if you will, and I just make them available when kids come into the room and talk to me, and if they're interested, and this particular one was, you know, most of you are familiar with Rubik's Cube, well, there was a gentleman that I actually was interviewing for an issue, and he saw this over, and I could tell he was interested, and I said, hey, go ahead and check it out, and during the whole entire interview, he manipulated this Rubik's Cube, and he didn't really, and normally you think of when people aren't making eye contact with you, that maybe they're not being honest, but really, he was being honest, and one of the administrators commented they could tell that he was listening to everything that was said, and I really felt like it made him, or it encouraged him to be more forthcoming, and he pretty much told me everything that he needed to tell me while he was manipulating Rubik's Cube, and then he pretty much solved it, and then gave it back to me, so I really can't complain, but that's just an example.
Mine requires a little setup. Right off tomorrow, we'll kind of quicker, it's getting heavy, that's fine. Something I learned from a colleague a long time ago, something called a cool-out corner. Back corner of my classroom, I have a place where students who need to have a little bit of a refocus, or just feeling really overwhelmed, or just need to have two very intense moments with Mr. White, have a place for that to happen. So I went to a garage sale and I bought an old high-back chair that would be on place anywhere other than where it is. The students have decided it smells mostly like peanut butter, but we're not 100% sure about that either. I had a colleague whose wife helped me make these. They're just sort of tea bottles full of glitter and vegetable oil, and those kids have worn them out. It's true, the freshmen will try to drink them, so you have to get fast, but they have just done so much. Should give them something to manipulate when, on those rare occasions when I'm not circulating, does happen. There are things for them to color, mandalas, different kind of art things reflecting their mood, they have a little art gallery in the back, some it's a little frightening, or they can post their work when they're finished. This is the third hourglass I have, they break this one for five minutes, so sometimes if I need somebody to have five minutes in the cool-out corner, we'll put it up there so we both know when I'm coming back there to have a conversation with them. Things like this help students refocus. It also keeps them in the classroom, of having a classroom management issue and all the normal things aren't working, this gives them a place to refocus. After a while, the environment becomes one where students know, sometimes it takes a look and sometimes it doesn't, that they just need to go back to the cool-out corner for a few minutes and refocus. So it's worked really well for me this year. One of the things I like to start off the year with is this ridiculous tree poster. Rich, you're mostly on, what would you describe that picture to be?
Picture of a tree in a field.
I appreciate that, I'm the fourth right. Steve, what do you see?
I'm thinking, I'm waiting to see the horse come walking across through the...
Steve, you're bringing your own issues in the classroom, you weren't... Can you just, can you just tell us what's there?
I love the tree and the field and the...
Steve, honestly, you guys have agreed. What color would you say the tree is?
Well, this way it looks, looks like it's in the fall with orange leaves, but this way it looks like snow.
So would you...
It changes as you move it, but right now it looks like fall.
Turns out now, Buzz, you're a clear-eyed gentleman, what would you see?
I'd say it's a green...
I'd say it's a green tree in a, in a nice green pasture.
So I always ask my students, you know, who's telling the truth and who isn't? People will say, "Oh, maybe what you see depends on where you're looking from." It can be a really nice lesson in perspective. And oftentimes I'll have students who aren't my students who are brought in by my students to show them this and I'll say, "What color is the tree?" This one my wife brought me, I'll close with this. It's from West Africa and it's got a tabletop, it has these kind of etched lines, these faces that are facing each other at some distance, represents the faces we show each other. Sometimes when I'm having a personality conflict with a student, I'll use this. I'll say, "Hey, you're over here and I'm over here and this is what we know about each other." But I'll bet you there's stuff under the surface that I don't know about you and maybe that you don't know about me, or you may be a guest. And after we talk for a while, I'll take that lid away and remind them that like these, the stands of this table, all of us are carved from the same block of wood. Have a lot of the same things in common. And sometimes students can really react to that in a positive way. So it's been really successful for me and over the years I've stolen ideas from colleagues and continue to add to it. Sometimes I have to replace the tree because if you have a substitute, sometimes the students take it apart to see how it works. Pretty cheap. So trauma-informed care is one of the most powerful things that I've seen in my short time at Central. It's paying huge dividends in my classroom and in the English hallway and I hear good things all across the building. So I want to congratulate you guys and the leadership it took to bring that to our school that really is working. So thank you for helping build that positive environment.
Hi, I'm Roseanna Larson and we have been working with Danielle Vanderlinde on trauma-informed care and how to kind of roll that out in our school. And so the Power Care classes are kind of being our guinea pigs and since and they've been fantastic. And one of the things that we did here recently is we did some trauma-informed training and Danielle came in and we spent about a week and a half with the kids and we talked about what it was and they took the ACEs survey, which is adverse childhood experiences. And it was really great for the kids to kind of understand that and just kind of see where they were all coming from. And not that they had to share out their own scores, but we put that information into, just into like a little PowerPoint for them to look at and see and we're able to share that with the staff. And the staff had also taken the ACEs survey earlier this year. And so when we compared those to, it was really similar, our classroom setting with the Power Care kids as to what our, like those experiences were with our staff. And so that was, you know, kind of nice for, I think, a lot of our staff to see that a lot of our students have also gone through a lot of traumatic experiences. And with our students, then we did the Paper Tiger film study and they had different questions that they answered and it was really engaging for the students, whether it was something that they could relate to on their own or that they could see friends or family members and some of those students who were featured in the film. And then we talked with the students about resiliency and how that's like, that's what we really want to focus on, is how do we build that resiliency in our students and how can they become those resilient learners? And so they're really excited and we have got a team of them ready to go next year and they're gonna be working with Danielle through our class. And we're also hoping to work with Asbeck and Mr. Roberts so that we can get more of our students involved in rolling it out school-wide and possibly even like across the district. So it's been great, so thank you.
Sorry, I make a lot of noise when I move. So I'm Yvonne Cranford-Tam, I'm a new math teacher at the high school and was pretty excited to be able to be a part of the trauma-informed care this year. So I'm here to talk to you about the coffee chats that we've been having this semester. It's just a time for staff to come together. They're at 7:15 in the morning, the staff can kind of show up, you know, as they come in. But it's just a time for us to come together and talk about ways to implement trauma-informed practices in our classroom, hallways, meetings, any interactions with each other. So we've had, what, four, five? Yeah, four, anyway, the topics this semester have been levels of stress, flipping your lid, which is a way to understand the brain in crisis, shared implementation ideas reflecting on how we as a staff are received by students. And I find it really helpful, it gives us an opportunity to kind of look at research. You know, Danielle shares things with us and then we can discuss how that kind of plays out in our classrooms or issues that we're facing and it's just kind of a really nice time to really discuss how to address certain issues. And so I've certainly appreciated it and I know many of our staff have as well.
Good evening, I'm Brett Baldwin, I'm one of the assistant principals at the high school. And I'd like to talk to you about how we use this approach with getting the heartbeat with our staff. I'm on part of a team that meets every week for a student support team and it's been one of those teams that has moved, ebbed and flowed, members in and out, we're trying to get some traction of the way we operate. And this year, we had a lot of good new energy come into the team and really tried to restructure it, but yet it felt a little disjointed and we sat around and talked and we decided that we needed to change the way our meetings were going. We were just all business and kind of just running through things and we just really wanted to be a more efficient team and get some of our things aligned together and we decided to start taking the heartbeat with staff. And what that means is that when we start a meeting, we'll go around the table and we have to, we get to or we choose to, select a color and tell people why we picked that color. And it kind of gives you a little insight to people's moods and what they're going through personally and it's just a kind of a check-in process to get grounded everybody and it takes about five minutes. But it's really given us a different feel to our meetings and the staff on this team has really responded well to it and we show up every Wednesday, ready to report our color and why and get our meeting started. It's been a pretty successful tool, is our feedback that we're getting from our team, so Danielle.
So that's what we have for kind of a formal share out this evening, so are there any questions?
So has everybody received trauma-informed training at the high school?
Everybody at the high school has received trauma-informed training. There was a full day training session back in October and then we've rolled out professional development kind of as appropriate throughout the rest of the year.
Yeah, book study next year.
Next year, book study, so we'll all continue to read about it and be trained in more depth.
I also wanted to introduce a page that looks like this. These are our summer maintenance projects. There's hardly any of them, as you will notice. Typically, we've had several hundred thousand dollars worth of projects to do this year. We are focusing on the ashtray boiler replacement and very little else. Cowman should be getting sort of the bulk of the work without the bond passing, we need to do some more work to enlarge the cafeteria, the space that we used temporarily this year and make it more usable. So that is our summer maintenance report, not much there. I also have a transportation report for you and these poor guys going last considering they're the ones who have to be up earliest in this district tomorrow. I'd like to introduce some folks from our transportation department to tell you about their fill-the-bus project. So John Kerr and Donna Walker, would you please come forward?
All right, so we'll be brief, talking about the 2017 Fill the Bus campaign. It's been ongoing, I'm surprised when I look back in the files online, it's been going on, what, ten years?
It's been, it started a long time ago and then people just didn't do it anymore as people retired, nobody took it on. So in 2012, we started it back up again and it's been great ever since.
So all of the proceeds from our efforts go to the Elacaran Food Bank right here in Independence. What we do is we organize a fill-the-bus event at Buy Mart in Lott's. We actually have a school bus down there and staff members are collecting donations from the community as they emerge from the store. We also, I leveraged the Beyond the Bell program this year to build me some cool little boxes to put into the schools, there were boxes of all sorts. And so we collect from the schools and the district office here. We leverage, lean on our people that completely at, at transportation to manage the event and run it and be there to participate from nine to three on the Saturdays that we do those events. We have family members that turn out, my daughter breaks softball people and they dress up in banana suits and other stuff and run around. So it really is kind of an extended family turnout for us as a team building.
It's an opportunity for the parents to come out and meet the bus drivers as well, that they may never even see.
Yeah, we have a lot of little ones that like to climb up in the bus and get a personal tour. So this year's results, we combined, combining the story vans, the school collections and actually this year the district had some green beans that they donated to us. So we brought in 4,655 pounds of food and $140 in cash.
Nice job.
Very successful.
Yep, that's it.
Thanks guys.
And I gotta say, the banana out, the banana out, because we're...
It attracts attention.
Oh my gosh, watching people get into is a weekend of enjoyment.
Thank you.
You'll see that enrollment shows we're ending the year exactly where we ended it last year, 3,222 students. Based on information that we've been sharing all year long, you'll see that the elementary actually is nine, nine students shorter or less than it was last year and the secondary schools are nine students more. So I think it's indicative, we've talked about our enrollment being relatively flat or consistent or predictable, I think you're seeing that it tends to be that way. The shape of the graph, the numbers that are involved seem to be predictable. What you also see in the back of that is that we have projected what our, what our projected total was going to be and then where we are at. What I can tell you is we projected that we would have 1,514 elementary students, we ended up with 1,523. We projected that we would have a total of 785 middle school students, we ended up with 759. We said at the high school we'd have 974, we end up with 940. So you see there where the changes are, but I think it supports what we talked about in that it's relatively flat as far as enrollment is concerned. Yeah, unfortunately, that doesn't mean we can tell you that the exact number of elementary kids born five years ago is, or yeah, five years ago is exactly, you know, balanced throughout the district, but those are the numbers that are looked at enrollment-wise. So any question on enrollment at all?
We use a roughly flat number rolling into the budget.
We've stayed, we've stayed flat, the difference that we've done is we've allowed it to catch up to us, so we are, we're gonna have to watch enrollment next year because we're right at the, I mean, we're right there. We've allowed it to catch us, but it's, we're right at the number, so. We'll start above what our number is that we turned into ODE next year, but we're gonna have to be careful as we come through. End of the year activities, of course, gosh sakes, it's just amazing, end of the year is here. This Friday, of course, is graduation, seven o'clock down at high school, a rain or shine. There are parking spots that will be available down by the stadium or down by the turf. We do have, we are looking to try to get a tarp, or excuse me, a tent to protect us if we can. We will make a decision mid-week with regards to the music component of it because of course to have all of the music down there, you have to have about $30,000 worth of soundboards down there and then one rain and that's, we're out that. So we'll be making, we're making adjustments as the week goes, but we would like to have you in the gymnasium at 6:30, by 6:30 on Friday night. If in fact you're not going to be able to attend, please let Adriana know so she can tell us there's not a tremendous amount of room up on the stage. I know here, I think it was either last year or the year before, Steve Mosher and I tried to bump each other off, we thought it was a cross-check from the...
That chair's awful close to you.
Boy, it was, I thought one of us was going. So if you're not gonna be there, please let Adriana know so we can make arrangements. Then Wednesday, June 14th at 7:30 is the year-end breakfast at the high school and at that point in time, we celebrate all of our retirees and get one last moment together. Unfortunately, this year, it's, I think it happens, what, maybe every three or four years, once the cycle?
Not very often.
About, there's a cycle where the, the year ends with our classified staff not working that extra day and this is one of those years, so certainly we will invite them and hopefully they will attend, but the, their last day is Tuesday, the 13th. So it's Wednesday, the 14th of June at 7:30 is the, we call it dinner. Couple, or breakfast, breakfast, they could eat dinner too, it wouldn't matter. Then, quick thing, I'm gonna revert to you a little bit, what, quick thing we have, very, very positive, I got an email here a couple of weeks ago and was tempted on the weekend when I received it to just send in the yes and, you know, we're gonna go and then I thought, wait a minute, you need to ask folks, you just better. It seemed like a no-brainer, so over the weekend I, I started emailing folks and it was such a good idea, they responded over the weekend. But every school year, the Oregon School of Appeals Court travels to different schools and allows the students to observe oral arguments on real cases that are on appeal. Additionally, students are given the opportunity to interact with the judges and ask questions about our legal system and how the court's decisions are made. Most of the logistics of the site visit are handled by the Court of Appeals staff. The whole school only needs to provide a space such as an auditorium, gym or a smaller community can use the local courthouse. In this case, Judge Arlene Ortega of the Oregon Court of Appeals extended the offer to Central High School for the 2017-18 school year, so next year there will be in fact a real case argued in front of our student body from the Oregon Court of Appeals, which is a unique and very, very prestigious opportunity for us to get involved and it means more than many of us. Then you weren't, you weren't a suspect of the last...
Dependent?
No. Well, but you're sitting next to the perpetrator.
Oh, true, I, I did, yeah. Do you want me to...
You want, you want to go ahead and confess here since you've been...
Apparently and according to, with much cachet with students, I murdered David Hewn. What happened apparently was that we went to a meeting and we argued over whether or not students should use cell phones in the, in the classroom and we disagreed to the point where I murdered him and many of the students have thanked me. This was all part of a forensic, forensic class, they, I actually did not know I was the murderer until they let me know. I had to provide both truths and not-so-much and they had to wheel it down. I tried to pin it on Chris Jordan very purposefully, but they saw through it all and it turns out I, I done it. Thanks for the shout-out.
She almost got away with that, didn't she? Next year I know the girl, I tried to...
It worked for those rotten kids.
I know next year they're gonna try to turn that into where we have a trial then to try to prove that fact. So, but I wanted to get you, let you know about the Court of Appeals. And then earlier this month, it was really interesting, I'm not known as being real quiet and I walk in such a way that is not real quiet, but somehow on a Saturday afternoon, myself and Rich and Sees and Dory and who else was it, Lisa? You know, snuck into the back of a room and we must have been all of eight feet behind and as we were watching this person up front announce the employee of the year for the OSCEA.
Statewide.
Statewide. And so this person is just sitting there and somehow we all got into the room and then the... then the person up there said, and the employee of the year this year is from our Region 3, Denise Chase. And Denise was a little bit taken aback, and then he said something about that's why all these people are here, and she turned around and went, oh! And what was really fun was just as she would watch, and she'd say, oh, Buzz, you're here. And then she'd come back and all of a sudden, oh, Rich! No, Rich was the last one that got taken aback. Yeah.
You're gonna embarrass me telling it right.
I think it was, Cease was then, and then Dory, and then some of us, somehow Rich in his Oregon hat blended in. Did you have an Oregon shirt on?
No, Lethfield. Lethfield. That's what threw me off.
She didn't recognize him, but certainly a great honor for the district. We have a ice cream social to honor her at the high school. But, you know, one of, a couple things I know, this is a statewide situation where she was recognized by the state, and it's the first time that Region 3 has ever had a representative. So Denise, I wanted to officially add a board meeting, recognize and congratulate her on being the employee. And with that, sir, that concludes my report. My final.
That's his final report. Congratulations Denise, and thanks for all the work you did in the report.
There will be a trophy that I need to have housed somewhere as well, so.
There will also be a tiara.
There's also, someone in the room will be wearing a tiara the entire...
We're all set.
That's sweet to see.
No you don't.
Bring pictures.
No you won't.
I trust Carol and Denise, I'm sure we'll get pictures.
I'm sure I can't trust them, so I'm sure you'll see them.
Okay, so Steve Mosher, you're doing the board report tonight?
Well, it says, on the page it says you, but on the front it says me, so I defer to you.
This is a foreshadowing of things to come, so actually my, I'll do the update. But next month we will actually be doing the election officers, if it was called. But my two-year term as chair is up, and our tradition is every year we do this in July, and I will step down, and then we will typically nominate the vice chair, and Steve is and serving as the vice chair. We don't strictly have to do that, but that's what we've been doing, and then we will need to identify a vice chair, so I think if anyone is interested in that or not, you might not like them, but it's, you better come to us here.
Somebody wants to.
To defend yourself.
We're not representatives of the state.
Yeah, exactly. I actually won't be here next month, so he'll get to actually be vice chair and then run the meeting, and then...
And then the new election.
Yeah, for the new election. And then we will also be swearing in our new board member, Christina, and Steve will save some comments to the end, but we won't be here. So, and that meeting is on the 10th of July, so, different from what Zach said, there actually doesn't be next month.
He's just...
Zach will, yeah. He's the... So I think I'll just limit it to that. Any questions, or if you can see the dates, that's also, you need to be tracking. So with that, let's move on to our consent agenda. And are there any specific mentions here for the consent agenda?
Well, kinda yes and kinda no. One of the things that you'll see there, if you haven't read it, you'll notice the bottom line in the retirements. Certain gentleman distant parlor is retiring, and that wow, I appreciate a lot of what we've been hearing. I tell you, I tell you, truly, 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 without the entire administrative group that we have here, none of our work is done, none of the things that we've accomplished. I don't care, you know, if it's people who have left, if it's people who are here, but without the administrative group, principals, district office, Cease, Rich, Dory, none of it happens. And Rich, I'm happy for you if I'm sad for the school district. I just wanted to point that out, that it's in the consent agenda.
I have a request from the back of the room.
Say my name, it'll be your cabbie.
Oh, and I'm...
It's cool, she's good. I'm happy to advocate for myself, so it's good.
It's on her plan.
It's on my plan. I've met my goal, so thank you.
I'm sorry, you know I love you to death, you little brat.
Yeah, we'll see.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approving the consent agenda.
Say it.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. That brings us to our business agenda.
Dory?
If you recall, two months ago I talked about coming into compliance with Division 22, and that we needed to go through the process of formally adopting curriculum. So on for a motion tonight, there is a mistake that I made, big ideas. We actually adopted that for the high school math program last June. And I went back and double-checked the minutes, it's a done deal. So on for tonight, Eureka Math, which is our K5, and we've been using that for four years. It started out as a bridge curriculum, and the feedback from the schools is that, do not change it, we need to keep going. And then Core Focus on Math was originally written years ago by Shannon McCollough and company, math teachers in Oregon, and they were the first ones to jump on board with Common Core and have kept up to date with it, and Tomich has been using that for also four years. So both of those are on for tonight as formal adoption. Any questions?
Who are adopting curriculum we've been using for four years?
Exactly. This is Division 22.
So if it ain't broke, don't fix it, right?
Pretty much.
So I knew that we approved the math curriculum, adoption for K through 5 being Eureka Math and K through 8 being Core Focus on Math.
Six through...
Six through...
Six through...
Six through...
Not K through 8.
Six through 8. K through 5 and then 6 through 8.
Oh, I say K?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
6 through 8.
Is there a second?
I'll second it now.
Okay, all in favor of adopting the motion to adopt the math curriculum? As prescribed by Steve, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We have been using for the last two to three years, the adjustment from, that occurred from last year to this year, is in the past we've had two options of a student body card at the high school, a $5 option and a $20 option. The difference between the $5 option and the $20 option is that for $5, it's an identification card, for $20 you get discounts into free athletic events, into dances. There's part of the money that goes to, excuse me, partially goes to athletics, part of the money goes to student body, and part of the money goes to, a small piece goes to power peers. Last year that $20, or excuse me, the $5 option went away, and we've had just the $20 option available. If you go back, one of the proud things of mine is I look back, as you, as you look at the things, when we first came here five years ago, our athletic participation fee was significantly higher, and our family participation fees were significantly higher. And we had, of course, no athletics at the middle school, and now we have athletics at the middle school. We have significantly lower participation fees than we had previously, and as you check throughout the various surrounding districts, significantly lower than many, many districts in the area. Most often, you'll see they're up in the 80s or close to $100 in other sports. So I salute you for your ability to help us be able to maintain affordability for our students and everything. As you work your way across, you'll see under the activity project fee, case, woodshop, welding, arts crafts, excuse me, tech theater, production works, upstage, makeup, and construction engineering are all classes. They're all classes that have a, some sort of a take-home type project that you can get involved in, so. Questions on that? Case is the curriculum for agricultural science education.
And what's the middle school student activity ID?
Perry?
Pardon?
Middle school student ID?
The ID should be off there. It is the middle school activity fee, so it pays for all those extra activities that we do for kids.
So I, I have an issue of charging kids to take education classes. And, you know, I just feel we're in a level playing field for equal education for all ages, charging for education classes to go away. I don't believe in it at all. I mean, we're supposed to be offering a free education, and then you're charging for an education class.
What I can tell you is in many cases those classes would go away because the extra costs are significant, and in almost every one of those cases, it's something that they are bringing home with them. It's something that they are bringing in, building, and then taking with them, or bringing in, in some way, shape, or form, consuming, they're consumables, it's not part of necessarily the educational process.
Technical theater.
Technical theater, they have props that they're building, they have...
It's makeup, they're...
Yeah. I mean, they're, it's a theater class, but there's, they're building props, they're doing, can't think what, costumes, or what the heck do they call clothes? They're doing props, they're doing costumes, they're doing sets, thank you for that. They're doing all that sort of stuff that are additional costs. You also have, in the tech theater, you also have some substantial costs. As an example, we did Aladdin Junior this year instead of Aladdin, and one of the reasons we did is because the fee for Aladdin Junior is about $1,400, which is about a half, a third of what it is for Aladdin. So we, we didn't do Aladdin because it would cost us about $5,000 bucks. So all of those extra things that come in where kids get the opportunity to participate in that are over and above a class, this is extra, just like athletics and things of that nature, are extra.
These are all electives.
They're all electives.
But kids need electives to graduate.
I guess you could make a case to say, well, okay, if Johnny doesn't have to pay for woodshop, how come he gets to take a project home and I don't get to take it home?
So I noticed that it says, students that have eligible, that are eligible for free immediate meals may have solid kids' credentials. So do kids have to ask for that, or do parents have to ask for it?
Just like they do at every school and every district, whether it's fees or anything that they come in and they go out there on a free meal, yeah?
Cause we can't...
We have no way of identifying.
We can't title reference together, right? So they have to self-identify.
They're also an old shop teacher, they're looking at just, kids are getting off pretty cheap.
But that's per project?
Yeah, with the $10, you might, you might have some kids that...
You know, it's $10 plus per project.
But you might have like a welding class, you might have...
So we can have these per project?
If they go out, if they're gonna build a large...
Build a trailer.
Stand on their choice.
Trailer or chest of drawers or something, you know?
But if they wanna, like in most of those classes, welding class for example, if all they wanna do is learn to weld, so they take scrap metal and weld it together in all the different positions and...
They'll be $10.
Guys are riding stuff, they're out $10, which is...
And trust me, I just approved the rod for that, it's a lot more than $10.
Just even when I was in school, there was some base charges for like, my, I love woodshop, and so that $10 probably goes and helps pay for the materials the school has to buy for showing the students how to use the saws properly and stuff like that. And then when you pick your project, you gotta pay for your project. But you know, there's, you know, that helps, helps out in purchasing those things that, you know, you use and are useless afterwards, and it's not something that, you know, everybody participating in the woodshop, participate, you know, that's an opportunity for them to learn something like he was saying, you know, there's some basic welding that you're gonna learn, you know, they gotta buy the materials to start out with and do that kind of a...
So to Peggy's question, one thing I might suggest is, we could proceed with this this year, but then, we talked about Measure 98 funding, it might prove us to do a complete review of, you know, the total amount of funding that we're generating through fees. I don't remember seeing a total numbers at a board meeting, and I don't know that it's a board action other than approving the fees, but I'm...
They're in a separate fund, but it's such a, you know, small amount, we don't identify it in service, so it's just part of our general grants, donations, and student body activities.
So if I were to total this all up for a year, should we be talking about $5,000, $10,000?
I don't track those funds individually.
We're just looking for order.
I don't even know, I, because...
I just want us to do it not to get a class or not to take the class because of economic disadvantage. And I, I want my classes to be available for everyone, and we're talking about leveling the field for closing that achievement gap. Well, if we're gonna close the gap, I think we, I think we need to start in conversations about closing, closing the economic gaps as well.
Now that there isn't one of those classes that a kid is kept out of, and they're oversubscribed, almost every one of them's oversubscribed, so I don't know how we would, you know, we can't offer more sections of them and they're oversubscribed.
Where I was going is to just do, you know, and ask that question, what's the total spend, is it already revenue that we're generating, what's it being used for, you know, is it true, and what's the total, I mean, if we were having a little bit more of a report than just approving the fees, so that when this comes around next year, we have that level of background? So it could be, I assume it wouldn't be that difficult to prepare for a future board meeting?
Provide that, right.
And if there are concerns, then we have a day.
Yeah, we have a day. Yeah, cause we don't know, I don't know, my kids are not taking it because they can't afford it, I don't know, I don't know how much it generates and what it's being used for.
Okay. So do we have a motion then, so given that we'll review that at a future board meeting? How do I have to adopt this reschedule? Here is our second. Thank you, Darcy. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the deschedule as presented, please raise your right hand. That passes unanimously.
And then we move into the necessary resolutions to adopt the budget, and they are specific and listed.
Yes, those were not, they were handed to you separately, I believe? Like this, front and back, they're separate. I think that was just on your station tonight. Oh. You got a lot of extra announcements.
Probably not appropriate, just make the motion.
No, it has to be very, very specific. No, unless you want to, you can move the, there's nothing of any consequence in the policy you want to put those in.
Let's go ahead, well, we could just switch to that topic. Let's go ahead and move to the board policy updates, first reading.
If you look at the first readings of the board policies, those that are highlighted in yellow are not being recommended to you for your adoption. Those that are highlighted in yellow either are policies that we know currently do not have, or in one case, there's a version... have, or in one case, there's a version three where we use version one in our, in our, in our policy handbook, with the exception of one, and that is ING and the INGAR. ING and INGAR is the policy as it relates to animals and service animals in the buildings. And Julia is doing a lot of work with that specific policy to make sure that, what are you smiling about, Karen? She gets a fifth grade in here, kindergarten. The, Julia is doing a lot of work in our specialty department, getting ING correct. So I, my recommendation to you is the current ING and the ING are in, offered to us by LSCDA is not sufficient, and we're working on improving that. The rest are really minimal, this is a month of minimal impact revisions where we're talking about, the biggest one is the professional development one, GCL slash GBL, and that's because there's an elimination of a tremendous amount of language that is brought down into just very minimal. So as you look at those, no substantive changes, and all the ones in yellow are not being referred to you for your review.
So what's, just a quick question, what's behind the academic integrity?
It's just a statement, if you go back to it, it's just a statement talking about, it's actually only a half page.
I was just trying to figure out why it's new, if I understand this correctly.
It is new, it is...
And what's it addressing?
It's just making a, an assumption of the, oh, how would I say it? It's just making an assumption of what we are already doing, you know, it's a pretty nominal, making an assumption.
On our policy.
Yeah.
Like what?
An honor policy.
Right. So it's basically a, we don't allow cheating on us, right?
Right. Yeah, but this is board policy. So that would be the referral to you for first reading of these policies.
So is this the time that we can talk about some of those that's in here, or is that coming next time?
You can maybe depend.
Because on policy number GCL, I was reading it, and the last sentence in the first paragraph, it says the plan shall be developed and written by district administration. And to me, that seems like a top-down directive, and it's not very collaborative. And so is that typical, how, is it typical for staff development to be just directed by administration, or is it more of a collaborative effort?
It says the plan should be developed by, to me, developed by is, in my mind, developed by is through the processes that are involved. And when the processes are involved, include the add council, include teachers involved, and includes everything, it's not delineated, and it's developed by, it includes the responsibility of accumulation into administratively, it would come through the DLT, the BLT, and all those various development components.
So I think that's the intent, and if you have some...
I was just wondering if the plan shall be developed and written by district administration in collaboration with...
Which, which would you read?
Is GCL.
Just from a process standpoint, I think what we could do is, you could suggest that word edit between now and our next board meeting. I think that suggestion would give it an idea on that, if you want to just write her a note. And then in our second reading, we could come back to that. I think the, it's a good pickup of that, I think our intention could be spelled out over, because I think what it describes is actual, right?
Right.
Could be a little bit more explicit in our version of policy. Any other comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the policy changes in our board packet for first reading? So, thank you, Steve, is there a second? Thank you, Steve, closure. All in favor of the motion to approve the proposed policy updates on the first reading, please raise your right hand. Thank you, and now that takes us back to our budget motions.
Thank you. I think they're on the printer, we turned it on paper, which is a agenda, so we went to the inventory. Apologize. Again, these are a variety of motions, they are numbered for you, they are our legal obligation to adopt, first of all, the entire budget. The entire budget includes amounts you will appropriate or allow for expenditure, and also include unallocated funds. In this case, in our district, our unallocated funds, we have some grants that we don't expend in this fiscal year because they actually roll over and they go through the federal fiscal year. So we always end up with some unallocated funds there. The other funds that we are not allocating at this time are, is our pers, we are reserving that for the future budget year. So the amount in number one is the total budget amount for all funds. Motion number two then is merely the appropriations, the part that you are authorizing the district to actually spend. And then on the back, we move to two motions, one of them establishing the rate for property tax, property taxes for the assessed value. One of those is the permanent rate which we get for our operating funds. The second is our general obligation to pay off our bonds. And then motion number four looks pretty much the same, but it's not establishing the rate, it's establishing the purpose. And then we'll go into a couple of other resolutions that are in your packet regarding our banks and designating folks who work for us, such as accountants and attorneys.
Okay, any questions about the process? Do I have a motion? Motion number one.
I move that the board of directors of Polk County School District number 13J resolve to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2017-18 in a total amount of $50,148,884, now on file at the district administrative office.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. All in favor of approving motion number one as read, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Do I have a motion with regard to motion number two?
I move that the board of directors of Polk County School District number 13J resolve that the amounts shown below totaling $47,690,967 are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, for the purposes shown below.
Thank you, Darcy, is there a second? Thank you, Peggy. All in favor of approving motion number two as read, please raise your right hand. That passes unanimously. Do I have a proposal or motion for number three?
I'll do number three. I move that the board of directors of Polk County School District 13J resolve to impose ad valorem property taxes upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district for tax year 2017-18. One, at the permanent tax rate of $4.8834 for $1,000 of assessed value for operating purposes. And two, in the amount of $4,059,518 for debt service on general obligation bonds.
Thank you, Jerry, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor of passing motion number three, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously, and do I have a motion for motion number four?
I move that the board of directors of Polk County School District 13J resolve to categorize the taxes imposed for purpose of Article 6, Section 11B as follows. Permanent rate tax subject to the education limit of $4.8834 for $1,000 of assessment value. And general obligation debt service bond series 2009, 2013, and 2015 excluded from constitutional limits in the amount of $4,49,518.
Fifty-nine.
Oh, fifty-nine.
All right, well, you have a pair of bills.
I can restate all of that.
You have to start over. I'll second. Thanks, Darcy. I'll not one real quick, just kind of technical, but it's Article 11, not Article 12.
Yeah, I should reread it.
What he said.
Thank you for the clarification, Steve. All in favor of passing motion number four, please raise your right hand. Thank you, that has passed unanimously, and do I have a motion?
I move to approve the designation of banks for the 2017-18 fiscal year as presented.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor of passing motion number five as crisply read by Don, please raise your right hand.
It's the easiest one, we get the time twisters and he raises his...
That passes unanimously.
So there is, there is one more.
There's one more.
Really? There is one more.
I get to make this one up.
Not on my list, but it's in your bucket, is F, which is 2017-18 operating resolutions selecting auditors, insurance agents, attorneys, and adopting the organizational chart. So I guess that's a...
That's quite a...
So if I didn't prepare this, then you have to make up your own.
So I move that we adopt the 2017-18 operating resolution selecting auditors, insurance agent, attorneys, and adopting the organizational chart.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Thank you, Don. Any questions or comments about that particular motion? I assume none. All in favor of passing the motion to ratify the resolutions as described, please raise your right hand. That passes unanimously.
I was smelling the other day tonight.
Okay, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Are there any comments by individual board members?
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm going to miss Steve Milligan on the school board this. Been a good ride with you, Steve. Enjoy your leave of time.
I actually had a couple of comments. One, I want to thank the board for appointing me for this last year. It's been rewarding to be able to help with the school district. And to actually get to dig deeper into this budget, it's been really informative. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is somewhat format and how the school board does business. Having come from the city side of it, and especially Montauk in particular, we do a lot of board sessions. And there are a lot of things I wanted to talk about over the year that I've been here that we just never got close to it. And I recognize that there were a few twists and turns that took us away from that. But I really think as the school board moves forward that some more time to really look at issues. I mean, one that was brought to the school board's attention tonight was the... And I guess how that goes out, turns out I don't really, I mean, I do care that the students are first and foremost in that. But at the same time, as I'm listening to all these parents talk about years and years of their kids going through teen time, actually going to college, and yet we don't have it in Ash Creek Elementary and Montauk Elementary. If it's that harmful of a program, why have we not had it there? And I think that's where we need time as a, as a school board to really be able to digest those topics. And then the other topic that I, it's personal to me because I've been able to participate with the school district in providing some computer coding classes. I've got a grant application in to see if I can provide some robotics and computer coding classes in the next school year at the elementary and middle school level. But as to STEM and CTE, my experience as doing it is that there's a lot of people in a district that are interested, teachers and schools, but they're kind of in silos. Individuals are doing it, there's no real cohesive program where it's consistent from school to school. So some schools, the kids are getting taught at different levels than other kids are. And I really think is the future of where we're going with technology and jobs, that we really need to, we talked about alignment in literacy and math, and I really think that we need to set a priority on the school board for CTE and for STEM STEAM, so that we make sure that all of our kids have that advantage. The two cities have done a really good job of making sure that Central School District, all the schools have just incredible high-speed fiber, so that, you know, information speed is not a problem. And I just, I wish that we could take more advantage of that as a district for our kids. The schools I go into, I'm just amazed, being a computer geek, it's just, it's frustrating when I'm walking to computer lab after computer lab and seeing a geek. And we've got, you know, the capacity to do it, it's just, do we have the gold to get it? And so in that transition, it just felt odd for me to come from an environment where we really are pretty good about setting goals for each year, where we're going, what we want to accomplish, so that things are tangible and measurable. And it didn't feel like that here. So I really suggest that as the transitions are going with new personnel, that you really look at that. And maybe that's the conversation that Jennifer's already had with some of you, but that you really look at some real clear goals for that. And not to say that phenomenal things have been accomplished. And there may be some goals that just aren't as visible on the wall as we do in the city, because if they're had good goals, the accomplishments would have been, wouldn't have been made. So again, it's been a privilege to work with you guys, work with this district. My hope is that I can represent, so I'm five on the budget committee, that you can, it's been, been a joy for me to do that. I like numbers, so it's not a directory for me. But again, it's an incredible district. From where I sit, the future's really bright, and our kids are just going to be blessed to be... Thanks again.
Thank you, Steve, and those are excellent comments. And I too want to thank you for stepping in when Kathy stepped out, it's been great to have you, you've been a really good asset on the board. And your perspective on your city role has been really helpful, so. We know where to find you. Anything else before we break for executive session? We have more work to do.
We'll have plenty of time to roast barbecue later.
Yes, don't forget.
I appreciate everybody who finished up our school year. Can't say thank you enough to everybody.
Okay. Thank you everyone, we are adjourned to executive session.